Joining us for the Pledge of Allegiance tonight, we are fortunate to have our NJROTC cadets, and so we are going to welcome them. If everyone can please stand for the colors.
Colors, hold. Freeze and colors.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carrie, colors. Ready, cut. Pose. March. Colors, hold. Freeze and arms. Post the colors. Ready, two. Carrie, colors. Ready, cut. Up, bow, face. Forward, march.
Aligarh.
Mark time.
March. Aligarh. Order.
Ready, cut. Right, thank you.
Training purposes only, Eddie. So rather than me telling what they're going to do with themselves afterwards.
They're going to go.
Take your seat. I have a final question.
Señora Ina Navarro. My name is Lynn Navarro. This is my senior year in Ellet High School. And my goal after graduate is going to serve as a military. Like I want to do, translate for multiple languages.
I'm Cadet Angel Harris. I'm a junior and after high school, I'm joining the Navy for photography.
I'm Cadet Bailey. I'm a senior. After high school, I'm trying to go to Akron U to study for criminal justice and be in the FBI.
I'm Cadet Beverly. I am going to be a sophomore. I am, after high school, I'm going into the Navy. And then after that, I'm going to open my business to become a wedding planner.
Cut, go, ready, hide. Left, take. Forward, march.
I think every summer since I've been on the board, they've been here to fill in for us to do the Pledge of Allegiance and the presentation of colors. They do a fantastic job. So as always, we are very thankful to them and to Petty Officer Greco. Community and school reflections?
I'll actually add one thing. Two of those young ladies were presenting the colors at, or Superintendent James's.
Installation.
Installation, installation. And they did an excellent job. So the two ladies have also been coming all summer, you know, giving up their time. So I wanted to make sure that was noted.
Okay. We do have two executives and a number of things going on. So if we do have community and school reflections, just ask. Maybe we keep it short. Mr. Miller?
I just, we had the breakfast with the Business Advisory Council meeting in the last couple weeks. And it was basically to thank the current version of the Business Advisory Council for their service. Going forward, it's going to look a little different. But I just want to thank everybody who was on the Business Advisory Council.
Too quick. I had an opportunity to go to Night Out on Crime, two different sides of town, the west side of Akron and the north side of Akron. They were very well attended. Want to thank the mayor, Billy Soul, and all those who were involved with that to put it together so that the communities can come out and celebrate and get ready for school, as well as all the agencies that were involved. And then also, I think a number of us had a chance to go out, or we went out this past weekend to Kimmore, or last weekend to Kimmore, this weekend or last weekend to Kimmore High School to do some painting to help with the football field. So I want to thank our board members for going out and giving some help to them over there in Kimmore, as well as doing all the things that Coach Boyd is doing over there to bring all those kids together. And so thank him for doing a good job as well.
Thanks. While we're on that, I am going to forward the board an email from Lisa Keen for next Saturday. If you can make it, we really need some support for some additional volunteers. It's looking like it'll be from 8:00 AM until noon. So I will forward that email to you tonight. Any other community or school reflections? Hearing none, we have two requests to address the board. There's a need to do these in executive session as they do involve personnel. So we are going to recess, and the board is going to move. So everyone else, you're free to stay put. We are going to recess across the hall. And we are going to take both requests one at a time. And they are listed on the agenda there. So I think first, if we're going to get settled, Mr. and Mrs. Furtze will be first, and then Jennifer Allison. Okay, with that, we are recessed into the motion. Do we need a motion?
We need a motion for executive.
Do we need a motion for executive session? And a second. All right, we are recessed into executive. Sorry, roll call. All right, we are going to go ahead and get started. We're back in regular session. And we will move forward with the presentation of advanced technology update.
I'm in executive session. I guess I shouldn't have said that, right? It's kind of exciting to have the opportunity to present to you, because we're on the verge of something really pretty fantastic with our One World implementation. And as you know, through the tech department is really the foundation. Without that, I think this has got to be 20 times bigger, really. But without the solid foundation, we can't obviously support the focus areas one, two, or three. So we're really going to talk a little bit about, really, a focus on the network and its capabilities. And some of our interesting projects are going to move forward as a result of your initiative. We're going to talk about One World. We're going to give you some idea where the device timeline stands. We're going to talk about some data service facts, because I think they're pretty interesting, and some projects that we're going to do. And I guess I've got to be excited about the facts, because I'm supposed to run it, right? So I'm going to go down here and try and pick up this part of it. In support of the wisdom of David, talking about every student staff will have a designed device to increase rigor and learning opportunities, both in school and at home, we moved into the One World device, One World vision, excuse me. And with your support, we've actually gone through two of four tiers of purchasing that equipment. This wasn't done in isolation. This is not a hardware buy. This is all about changing instruction in the classroom, and about the PD that has to go along with it for all of our staff and our students. We've used, as a kind of a refresher, we've used the International Society of Technology and Education. It's a national organization. They'll frame our work. And over the past year, we've had something like 45 different people work with us. We've had some 3,500 hours, if we added them all up, to design the four committees that we talked about here, professional development, supports, and maintenance, is purchasing, and policy standards. These folks here, Kevin, Megan, Donna, Matt, Cheryl, Suzanne, Juan, Tamiko, and Carrie, we know each other better than we ever thought we'd ever want to. So anyway, my hat's off to them, because they should be here presenting, doing this work, okay? Because without their work, we wouldn't be here today. They have designed, through their wisdom and the guidance of the national organization, they've designed a blueprint for the principles. And this blueprint really talks about some eight pages, if you would allow me to use that, of best practices, things that you must think of now before you move to the next step. It's all sequential, okay? And it's really pretty exciting, even right down to the point where you see in this particular library, whether we're talking about how you ought to set up your devices so that the teachers can get them, and so that the students can get them in an orderly fashion. This has been a very interesting project. And we're now using the Hays management system that we purchased last year as we break in ourselves, trying to take care of the asset management tracking of this type of thing. Inside of that principles blueprint, we have such things as best practices. And I'm not going to read them to you. But it's chock full of best practices and where you can go to do this. The SAMR model, I believe I showed that to you earlier in the spring or maybe January. And this one is how you might use the SAMR model to work with teachers as they start to change their instruction as they go up those four tiers, okay? What have we done with the rollout to date? All right, we have, the teacher devices have been given to the middle schools in December of '16. The high schools, teachers got their devices in March of '17. The student devices actually started in the fall of '16 with Bridges. Then we moved to Innes, James, Litchfield. And we did Booked, Seven and Eight, and East Seventy, because it was a middle school rollout. And we didn't get any further in that implementation because of delivery challenges, okay? So we're going to finish that this fall. In August, we have STEM Middle, STEM High, and Booked. I'm going to take a second to talk about them, so that we, they're a little bit different, because we talked about redeployment of devices. STEM Middle, we had some laptops that we had available to us. So they're going through the last phase of laptops, five through eight. So right now, they have laptops, and they're going to be transitioning, starting next fall, into Chromebooks. STEM High is starting a Chromebook implementation right now at ninth grade. But because we'd already brought laptops for them, we're going to allow them to move their laptops through their school years, okay? That also allows the staff, which really did a lot of their development work on Windows machines, to have some time to transition into the Google Classroom. So it's a PD thing in addition to using our devices in an effective way, okay? So Booked right now, they have Chromebooks for seventh, eighth, and ninth graders. They have laptops for 10th, 11th, and 12th, okay? And East, they right now, when they walk in, they'll have Chromebooks for seven, eight, and nine. And higher will get, their distribution actually goes out to, what'd they say, 21 or something like that? So hires are in process to their building. Actually, they're in the building right now. Our big purchase that we made for, in May, for this year, they're supposed to start coming into our warehouse on the 21st of August. So it's going to take us some time to get them in there. So AAA, East, Ellet, Firestone, Kimmore, Garfield, and North will all have their devices. So the high schools will be fully operational with one-to-one devices. I'm optimistic by the end of the second week of September. But it all depends on two things, and that's the distribution piece. It depends on if they hit our warehouse, if it's all slapped and ready to go, or if we take it in segments, okay? So we get 2,000 now and 2,000 later. And then, oh, by the way, we have to make sure the bags are there, too. So it's just not the devices, the bags, and putting all that together. We'll get it out of the warehouse as quickly as we can. And we're learning more and more about the asset management tagging system, which is going to be the, you know, really the lifeblood of making sure that all of our assets, the Chromebooks and then our textbooks right beside it, and many other things, are tracked in a more efficient way than what we are. In the fall of '17, we are looking through some of the learning that we did over the summer attending the conference. We're going to work with Mary Outley on how we really want to kind of revise a little bit of our distribution of Cyberling, which we talked about was going to be in Tier One, and all six grade elementaries, how that's going to roll out. And we should have that done in early September, too, I believe. But it really leans itself to, or lends itself to, the PD that we have to get accomplished. It's not the devices now at this point, it's the PD for our staff. Because especially in the elementary piece here, K one, two, three, it's how to organize that laptop, excuse me, the Chromebook. How are you going to organize it so that you can find your work efficiently? Because I got to tell you, it's, I'm not an elementary teacher, but I could surely tell you that my desktop is not the best organized in the West. And I would absolutely want to know where my kids are putting this stuff, so that when they miss it or can't find it, I can go over one-on-one and say, hey, listen, this is, remember, we put it like this. And so that's really what we want to get accomplished before we do that. Let's go. Maybe turn it back on. All right, the balance, we had four tiers on our rollout. It's not all set solid, but we're looking at spring for our elementary devices through some teachers. We're looking at the tier three, three through five, which is the spring or the fall, spring of '18 or fall, and then the pre-K somewhere in that same range, K to two. Data services, we operate downstairs, some 67 different software packages or companies that we have to interface with. Now, all of them are huge, and all of them are interfaced together. And it's really a monumental task to do that. And what I tried to do is put them in some categories so that you could kind of see how they fit. Obviously, the communications with, you know, the new website really excites us right now, how we're going to walk into trying to make our data a little bit more interesting for our public, home centers, and emails. How many emails do you think we did in six months? I know you will not.
Eleven million.
11.2 million emails since February. 11.2. That's huge.
Can I ever span?
That's what comes through. I went right into the trap. All right, so our data, our data management with EMIS and, you know, a lot of people don't think about school photos, but they're all out there. And we have a working, the JPEGs and all that stuff. And Active Directory really is the heartbeat around all of those processes. Finance, Munis, Hays, in Ohio checking out, you can't have age, whoops, you can't have, in the wrong way, high-tech meat. Get there, please. You can't have a human resource department without the Munis system. You see how integrated this stuff is? And I can't have a data management system for student learning over here in e-school. If I don't have Munis and HR, it's, you know, it's all woven together. And you can't, you can't pull one piece out and have it work. So we have human resources there with AppleTrack and Aesop and Equifax. And I think some of that stuff has saved you a little bit of time. And staff development, this is one of the biggest pieces. Staff development is not just, it's digital literacy for staff. I mean, it's really what it's gone into, is digital instruction or support for the staff. Because if we don't do that, then we can't really pass that on to the students. So it's really, you saw how bad I am moving the arrow around up here. So it's that type of thing that really makes the difference. Now, we have, over the past year, we've retired 10 major core devices downstairs, which we estimate it would cost us $250,000 to, or $250,000, excuse me, to re-buy. In our reorganization down there, to operate those 10 devices costs us $500,000 a year in a, in a server really is, like expectancy is five years. So we believe we've done something here to save a couple bucks, okay? We've retired some 85 servers, which now at this point, since we've been downstairs, we've tried to totally reorganize the system down there. We've retired over a third of our servers, which is good, because then you don't have to operate them. You know, you don't have 110 power and all that kind of stuff. And Paul Doxy and his crew has done a wonderful job trying to work with this type of thing. We got rid of another 104, we upgraded 104 servers with some hardware or software so that we could get more life expectancy out of them. I already told that one. 37,000 requests for support have been handled through our ticket system, which really is pretty phenomenal. When, three years ago, I would have said, we didn't have much of a system. And now it's really pretty integrated in what we do every day. Internet failover. We never had that before. Oh, my gosh. You see this right here? I know you can't see. Do you see that little, looks like a hose laying there on the ground? That's when they dug up the street out here, and that's our fiber line. That's our fiber connected line, laying over there in the street. Now, within five minutes of them pulling that line, we rerouted, we, hear what I said? We didn't call anybody else, Akron Public Schools, with the help of our department downstairs, rerouted our network to Cleveland through Blue Bridge. Out of the wisdom of this group, trying to say, hey, listen, we're not in this, in the education business to actually establish a fail-safe network system. We went over to Blue Bridge, hired it, and did it done with a minimal fee every year, which really, Blue Bridge is one of those places that, if we had a disaster in the United States, it's one of the first places that will automatically get fuel, diesel fuel flown into it, so that they can keep the servers up and running that they have in that place. So our data is secure there. Some upcoming projects, new, all right, our router's installed with, in locations. That's one of the reasons why we're able to retire some of our servers, because our routers are better, and they'll take on more traffic and all that type of stuff. And then obviously, as we put more and more devices on our network, our bandwidth has to increase. The phone system, that will tell you, the phone system's being redone. It's really kind of a neat piece, because it interfaces now with our website. It'll all tie together, the all-call system and everything will all tie together through our website, too. So that's up and coming this, this year. We're increasing wireless coverage. I mean, in here, we've actually modified it so that we could actually, in this room itself, we doubled the capacity of the wiring capabilities here. Google and GoGuardian, which is working with us right now on our Chromebooks and stuff, they want to feature how we've turned around, modernized our classroom and our work nationally, which is one of the projects we're going to be working on over the, this year. And then the other, I left it down on my desk, but the other piece that we're really looking forward to is, you know, making it easier for our kids K3 to get onto the network, all right? And we, we believe that by the end of this year, we'll be able to take a card like this, you know, that square picture on it, and the kid will be able to flash it in front of the Chromebook, and they will instantly be logged into our portal, just like that, and then have access to all of our digital content line. So that's where we're going. And I say K3, I guess we could do it for everybody. But in reality, good digital citizenship requires us to teach them how to log in, do passwords and things like that. But when you get the pre-K and up to two or three, you know, sometimes it's easy to do, it's easier. More education, more learning is going to get done before you can put something in front of the machine to do that. That's what I have for today. Any questions?
I just need the card.
Huh? I needed to.
You guys did a good job. I mean, it's kind of foreign to me, but the help that I've gotten from you guys as well has been really good. And I think it's, I like the way it's being plugged into academics really well. And we're going to be at the top of the technology world. I like it.
Good.
Appreciate it.
I mean, the connectivity that we've had over the past year has, to me, you know, almost beyond my wildest imagination when we started working downstairs three years ago. And that's due in large part to the people that are sitting around the room, to David James and his vision, your support, and, you know, things like E-Rate. And, you know, it makes a huge difference. And I think we've got a quality staff down there, too. I think this is none of me, please, this has got nothing to do with me and everything about the people who work downstairs that are working with me, as we start to take a look at it, at a better vision. And I guess I was remiss in not saying this, provide one of the high, sustainable networks for the leaders of tomorrow. It's what we're about. And when you look at that and how it meshes into our own district mission, I think we're right there for you. Yes, ma'am?
I have one question, and if it wasn't for the fact that we're in the middle of receiving, oh, 800 different iPads or new things going on at the Board of Elections, I would never even know anything about this. But now, so I have one question on, unfortunately, the timing was wrong for you. And do you have, when you said they were going to get 4,000, and do you have an acceptance testing procedure that goes through? Because right now, that's what's going to take us the longest, as we're going through and finding out that, yes, this one works, no, that one doesn't, this one is, this is all?
Our acceptance procedure is handing it to the student first time and letting them try it on.
Okay.
Okay, I mean, really, with 5,600 devices hitting the warehouse at one time, our first goal is to, believe it or not, we have to, one of the things we learned at the conference is that you have to barcode this plug-in device.
Oh, believe me, we're.
You got to do it. It's not just a computer. You got to have that connector. It's got to be coded, too. And all of that needs to be linked to the student. And we're ready to do that. Our first 4,000 that we did with our middle schools, I think I had three failures. So I'm not really worried about it. Because the other piece that really works along with that is this GoGuardian piece that's, that's on the machine to try and aid us in tracking it, other than anything else. Plus, the other thing about the Chromebook is everything's in the web, or everything's in the cloud, excuse me. And so you turn it on, you're in the cloud. I'm never going to own another Windows machine in my life. I mean, the Google Cloud is there every day. You turn it on, you're there. It's 200, as a person not buying it in a school district is probably 200 bucks. And so all the software, there's no software updates. There's none of that kind of stuff. It's all done by Google and their wonderful staff. Just, who has all of our, our emails? 11.2 million? Remember, I had to save those once? I had to save those once. Now they're with Google, and we can get access to them anytime we need them. Yes, ma'am?
Debbie's question was very technical and, you know, highly educated. Mine's going to be very simple. And then I have a compliment, too. So it says, increased wireless coverage? Our buildings are so well-built that we can't get a cell signal in or out, and you can't get Wi-Fi in a lot of places. So that's going to get better?
No. For the students, what you're talking about, is it going to get better for this?
Yes.
No.
Or how about for this?
It's going to get better for that.
Okay.
Yes. Our students will have better connectivity in the building.
And the website, when is the website? And the website, when is the website, what, a rough estimate? Is it 70%?
I have one, which is much more. Mine is, I'd like to see something up by the end of October.
Okay.
I know others would prefer to see it by semester. So it's going to be a race between one deadline or the other. We have, uh, we have a meeting, I think it's in two weeks to try and formalize that target deadline. I've done some work downstairs with a guy named, uh, Ryan, thank you, Ryan. And we're trying to hone in on that, when we could really logistically expect to get that, and we'll give that to you as soon as we have it.
And the compliment is, I promise to never say we're passing out computers ever again because this is far more of an integration into their education than just giving a bunch, giving kids computers. And I think that sometimes it's just easy to say we're giving every child a computer instead of what this really is, so thanks for the explanation to make it.
I think another way of bringing it home too, okay, is that we have English, math, science, and social studies, just for simple wash. Each one of those core academic pieces have a digital connection for each year we have a student in the, all right, so you take those four, multiply times the number of students we have, that's our digital connection, our digital footprint that we get to, all right? That's, that's where we're heading. And I think we're well on our way.
So eventually all the kids will have access somewhere, maybe from their home, to get on their device, because I know there, I can't remember what school district, it was very poor and they end up putting like a bus or something with a piece on it.
We even talked about that.
So that the, the kids in that, that area who were very poor, their families could not afford to have Wi-Fi, but they were able to get Wi-Fi, continue to stay abreast of what other, their assignments when they had to go home, so I, I, I don't know.
Those will be some interesting things we're going to have to work through as we discover the magnitude of that particular problem. And we are committed to doing that.
Yeah, I think it's, I'm sorry, I think it's important for those, even if we have 70%, we have 100% of our kids have access to the lab and we're hurting 30% of our kids.
And I'm going to follow up on that a little bit because that means like if McDonald's has free Wi-Fi, you should be able to, because I know that I have to use my Wi-Fi when I go into McDonald's. Because I make a point of going out on my lunch hour because I can't pull it up at work, so it's what, I'm just trying to.
Yeah, there's, there's a login at McDonald's, there's a login at Harby's. I, at lunchtime periodically I'll go to Harby's and I'll see some folks, some kids over in the corner with their parents and they're all gone. They're not necessarily our kids, but we want them back.
It says, um, because I thought with the firewall telling me I couldn't get out.
Well, thank you, Mr. Lawson, definitely an interesting topic.
I have a, I have a, I have a, but I'm thinking, I can't get out.
Appreciate your updates. Thank you.
Also, just because the Wi-Fi is doubled in this room does not mean that we should be logged in. That's all we're looking for.
I can't watch the house of cars.
Yes, sir. If you want to bug Howard some more, he'll be early tomorrow.
Einstein bagels in the morning, that's, that's it. Search your clock through, that's where I'll be.
All right. With that, we have approval of the meeting minutes from the regular meeting, July 24, 2017, do I have a motion? Do we have a motion and a second? Any questions or comments on the meeting minutes? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Otterman?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Superintendent's recommendation?
Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration 60 personnel recommendations. These recommendations are on proper form and I move their approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Before we do any questions, I just want to say a quick thank you. I know, obviously on item number one, we see Ms. Hanson on there and that is definitely a loss for us as she's been so instrumental in helping with Nestecca in setting up the academy, the college and career academies, and so we are definitely disappointed on, on our end, but I know we're extremely excited for her and she, my understanding is she will be at University of Akron and we will have a great partner there as well. So any questions or comments on the personnel recommendation? Hearing none, roll call please.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes, abstaining on 59 and 60.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes, abstaining on item 57.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes, abstaining for item 58.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Ivan?
Yes.
Next, Mr. President, I have approval for your consideration, two motions and 16 resolutions on the consent agenda. These recommendations are on proper form and I move their approval.
So move. Second. We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments on this, or on the consent agenda? If not, I would like to point out item number 12 and give the superintendent some recognition for his award, for the Ohio Superintendent Outstanding Performance Award from the Martha Holden Jennings Foundation, and we are accepting tonight a grant in the amount of $10,000 that came along with that honor. So congratulations to Superintendent James as he continues to be recognized for the work that he's doing in our district. Roll call please.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Otterman?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
And finally, Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration, 44 Business Affairs recommendations. But please note in item 33, we are deleting the general funded items. At this time, we are asking approval only for those items funded by Child Nutrition. These recommendations are on proper form and I move their approval.
You have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on the Business Affairs?
A few questions, yeah, small. Well, item number two, 380,000, do we, do we pay that for St. V and our students or is that just for our, is that a combination of our students and St. V? As far as the dollar figure?
Uh, that is actually everything that we do. That includes Metro High School passes, which you remember you approved, contracted 250,000, and then the result in 130,000 is for St. V and St. Mary's and any other incidentals that we need to do such as trip or buses and things like that.
Okay, does that money come through us, or just come through, or Akron Public Schools pays for St. V?
We pay for these services as well.
Okay. And then I also had a question on item number 11, is that the correct amount of 350,000 that we usually pay? I wasn't, I didn't remember, that's why I had. Yes, for, for.
That's the not to exceed amount.
Okay. And then item number 40, what type of consulting services are, is this, are they going to provide for APS?
Jackie Boynes provides some mentoring services to a variety of staff and I think Dr. McWilliams can add some additional guidance to that.
Yes, she does mentoring for our new principals and if someone needs additional support. And then she also runs our Aspiring Principals Academy and supervises the interns that are, that are out there working as part of our ACA program.
And that comes through higher economy education services there?
Correct.
Thank you. Other questions?
Just my annual pet peeve, item number 11 and the rent that we pay for Central Howard. I, you know, personally, I still think with all the excess space we have sitting around in the Akron Public Schools District, we should not be renting classroom space, particularly when we already have a building in the middle of campus that could function for the high school.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Otterman?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Otterman?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Superintendent's report?
Um, the only thing I want to say is, you know, over the weekend, I saw some very disturbing events taking place and, um, since we don't have senior staff tomorrow because many of us will be at, along with you, at Senior Point with our Wheels for Education students, I just wanted to remind staff that, you know, our jobs as adults are to make sure that when we start school in a couple of weeks, that, you know, we provide some reassurance to our students that everything's going to be okay and that if there is a problem, we'll deal with it. I just was not very happy about some of the hatred that I saw on television and I think our schools, you know, our collection of, and a reflection of our community, and as adults, we need to make sure that when those doors open, that we're very welcoming and supportive of our community. We have a very diverse community here in Akron. We have some folks who are new to this country and we, I think, done a wonderful job of supporting them. We have some folks who may be here illegally, but we still have the, the responsibility of educating. And so from there and everything else in between, you know, I just want to remind staff that, you know, we're, and I know we're all on the same page, that we're going to work hard to make sure we have a wonderful start to this school year that's respectful and it's very inclusive for all of our diverse student population.
No president's reports tonight, February's report, committee reports, the contracts and board policy of financing capital management, instructional policies to the initiative.
Just a couple things because, and we didn't really discuss them in reflections because we had it in here too, but one is the College and Career Academy at work. Our timeline, all clusters have completed, the two academy design team meetings, each cluster did have strong representation from a variety of stakeholders. The information gathered during the session is going to be used to write the final proposal for the superintendent to share with us on September 25th. And I, I'm going to throw in one thing from what's said, but I attended many of them and then also many of us were the other night over at Bookville when it was the combined and I just, a shout out to Rachel, I think her and Annie and the team have done a great job and really worked very hard in getting good information so that this makes us a good, successful project. The other thing is our ambassadors, you might have noticed at the superintendent's installation, the Firestone Student Ambassadors. That program will launch for the 2017 school year in most high schools and a few of the middle schools. Each high school will identify a lead staff member to support the initiative and provide students with applications and hold interviews in September. There'll be district-wide training on September 28th where the ambassadors will measure with their jackets, so that's the important part. Each high school will then be able to select two to three students to attend the National Student Study Visit, which will be held November 13th and 14th, and what a great opportunity, so. And all high schools will have an ambassador program for 2018, 2019. The schools with an ambassador program for 1718 are North, Nipstom, Firestone, Kenmark-Garfield, Akron Harley College, Bookville, East, Litchfield, Innis, and Mossack.
That was decided on at the building level?
Yes.
Also, just going along with that, I know a lot of us were there the other night and I wanted to give a shout out also to our principals along with Rachel and Annie. They, um, they were absolutely amazing. I, I moved from room to room, as I know several of us did, and just the messaging and their questions and getting information out of people was really fantastic. The second update is on the I-Promise School Design Teams. It's been a busy summer in instructional policies. The work of the IPS design teams are on track. All timelines have been met and the work is moving forward. Those of you who had the opportunity to be there for the committee updates really had a treat. I feel sorry for those of you who couldn't be there because it was a meeting to be remembered. I, I've never seen a moving bus of people go across a room before. I know there were a couple of times where we were slack-jawed, just going, what's going to happen next? It was amazing. So just so you know what's coming up so you can be ready as board members, the Instructional Policy Committee expects to review the action plans on September 8th and 15th. So you're welcome to come to those and then the first reading will be ready for the board to review on September 25th. So things are moving quickly. At your, at your spot, so that I don't have to read through these, I would encourage you to, because if I read them, you're not going to remember them anyway. So please take a look at some of the outcomes from the design teams. I think that there's a lot of important information in there and there's, each of those design teams are listed on there along with those who worked really hard as chairs and chair chairs. And the last part of our update is House Bill 49, and that has to do with graduation requirements. Again, we're not going to read this to you because otherwise it'll just go in one ear and not the other, but please take a look at it. Remember, our current seniors that are set to graduate in 2018 are the first class to graduate under the, using the Ohio State Tests rather than the OGTs. There's been a lot of talk, and I know we talked about it in here, about how there was going to be, there are some concerns about needing those graduation requirements. So recently, there've been some, two, there've been other options added. So the first couple options just seem really familiar and then there's been, there are additional options in there, so please take a look at those. If you have questions about those, please don't hesitate to reach out to Debbie and I, who will immediately refer you to Ellen.
But, but we had an overview of them.
We did. And, you know, the, the good news is, is our staff and our counselors, again, are amazing people who are up on this. They know which kids are in, are in danger of not passing. And this is being worked on, which options they're going to fit into, especially if you look at the Capstone Senior Project, these, these students going into their senior year are going to be set up to succeed thanks to our staff, in particular, the superintendent and assistant superintendent going to Columbus and making sure this happened, and then this bill passing. So please take a look at that as well.
And after, I want to say a big thank you to the superintendent and assistant superintendent for being this involved and getting something that we can dig our teeth into and make sure our kids do succeed, so thank you.
Definitely, thank you. Thanks for always having me give a report, you do, and I know the other committees don't have a report tonight, but I know that you've also been busy. I know that there have been meetings, so I appreciate all of that. I do want to back up for one second because I, in my haste to make sure that we're moving through the agenda, I did forget that I wanted to point out yet, one more accolade that our superintendent has recently received, which is the Buckeye Association of School Administrators. He was recently installed as president of that organization. Many, if not all of us, attended that ceremony. It, it was a fantastic opportunity and one more way that we see how, how Akron and our superintendent are recognized, not only around this community but around the state, for the work that he does on a daily basis to advocate for our kids. And now he'll be working, continue working, but as the leader, the superintendents from across the state as they advocate for their children as well, and that organization advocates for those superintendents. So thank you for your hard work and we, it was a real pleasure to be there that day. I think that's it. Okay. Any unfinished business? And the new business we are going to handle after?
Yes, I want to introduce a couple lines now, we'll have to go into executive session.
That will work.
Right. So the first item under new business, Mr. President, I am making some administrative adjustments which are going to require contract suspensions and these aren't related to discipline. You know, these folks are doing a fine job, but I am going to have to change a sentence need to make some adjustments to contracts, which I'll review in executive session, because I deal with specific individuals.
The other item to see, we do have a pending matter with Local 689, which is our Educational Assistant Union, for all this personnel, so we have a part of discussion in the next session.
Thank you. With that, pursuant to revised code sections 121.22G1, for the purposes of discussing or considering the appointment, dismissal of discipline of a public employee or official of the school district, and revised code section 121.22G3, to consult with legal counsel to discuss disputes involving the board and/or the school district that are subject to pending or imminent court action, and revised code section 121.22G2, to consider the purchase or sale of property, and looking for a motion for executive session. So, move. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion before executive session? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Otterman?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
All right, let's take...